Thank you, Jason. Good evening. I called this meeting to order. Today, we have two items on the agenda. We will start with pavement condition and walkways, current assessment of future needs. I want to welcome Martin Pastura. I keep trying to remember your last name. Pastusha?
There it is, perfect.
Pastusha, Martin Pastusha. Welcome, Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everybody. Before Jim gets into the presentation, I just wanted to give you a little background on this particular assessment. This was a request that came to us in terms of understanding where are the condition of our current streets and our sidewalk and the needs for additional sidewalks in the community. I think this came arose out of our budget discussions and some information were presented there. I have to make a sort of an asterisk or correction to our information that we presented in our budget because the good news is we have updated information. The city was involved in the process of hiring a new vendor to do an assessment of our street condition. And by doing that, we've got some good news, some great data that Jim's going to share with you and talk a little bit about. But it's not complete yet and we haven't done all the analysis I think we need to do in order to give you a complete picture. So we have some suggestions in terms of moving forward. But in terms of our current pavement assessment, I think we've got a good condition or a good assessment of the conditions and a way to move forward in terms of how we need to look at that. Depends on what the council's priorities are and we can look at various scenarios that you'd want to see in terms of investment in the future pavement and what those would generate as a benefit to the community. In terms of sidewalk, it's a little bit different. You'll see from our sidewalk project that we do a little work. We have very old data on our sidewalk project. One of the things that's going to come out of this is a request that we go out and solicit for a new study to basically bring our sidewalk up to date. The last study we had still didn't include a couple of annexation areas that have occurred since then. So really to get to do the same thing with our sidewalks that we've done on our street project, we're going to need to do a little more information gathering and condition assessment than really to give you a good idea of what kind of investment would generate, what kind of benefit for the community. So with that little preface, I'll turn it over to Jim Sights, our Transportation Director, and let him go ahead and walk you through the presentation.
All right, thank you, Martin. And I do have a presentation to share. Load that up. Okay. I'm going to start with the pavement conditions and just wanted to say, first of all, this really is a joint effort between two divisions. We work very collaboratively with our Maintenance Division on these two topics, both pavements and walkways. So it's both a Transportation Division effort and a Maintenance Division effort to maintain our pavement condition and sidewalks as well. So the first presentation, I've got it broken down into the two topics. I'll talk a little bit about why it's very important to maintain one of our largest assets is pavement in the city. And it's a very important asset that we need to maintain and why we need to do that. I'm going to talk a little bit about what Martin talked about, our new method of surveying for our pavement condition index and the new results that we found from this new program that we have. And talk a little bit about what our citywide gold should be. In the past, we've always used 70 as a guideline. But as you'll see, our pavement condition index is a little bit above that. So maybe we want to aim a little bit higher or at least maintain where we are now. And then talk about what our next steps will be in the process. So first slide, you always want to talk about when you talk about pavement condition is the life cycle of your pavements throughout your city. This is a pavement curve that shows the life cycle of your pavements. When we build a brand-new street, the pavement condition is perfect. So the scale is 100 in that case. And it deteriorates over time. The Y-axis shows the scale 0 to 100. Then time is the X-axis. And over time, as the pavement deteriorates, there becomes a point where you need to start applying some preventative maintenance or doing some work to either fill in cracks that have developed over the years and do some work. Otherwise, if you don't apply those treatments, you can see the curve starts to steepen towards the right-hand side. And where it would cost you a dollar to treat it when it's still repairable, it'll end up costing you four to five times that amount if you let it continue to deteriorate over time to a point where you really can't do anything other than rebuild the street at some point. So it's a very smart thing to do to maintain your assets from a preventative maintenance standpoint. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the techniques that we're going to probably be looking at over the next couple of years with our maintenance staff, with new tools in the toolbox to help us maintain those pavements rather than let them deteriorate and end up costing us a lot more in the future. This is our new program. The company is called StreetScan. The platform is called StreetLogic. And in the past, we'd always used a vendor that hired part-time people to go out and actually inventory all the streets in person. From year to year, sometimes we didn't get the same people doing it. So we have that issue of repeatability of the results. And the other thing with our old vendor, we did not have the platform. So we had to rely upon them to actually do all the analysis for us. Whereas the new program, you may have seen over this last year, this vehicle on our streets, filming the streets, also collecting some additional data. Besides pavement condition, we also collected pavement markings. So it was another bonus of going with this company is to provide better inventory for other things. But this program is a platform, videotapes it, and the program itself will analyze defects in the pavement and record those. And from a quality assurance standpoint, they also review the video along with the pavement condition and distresses so that in case there's any blemishes that may not be showing up, that may not be a crack, they're able to do some quality control and assurance is that way. So it's a much more repeatable and reliable system that we're going to be moving forward with this new StreetScan system. This is actually from the program and it shows the different treatments that are being recommended by the program. It also shows a citywide PCI, which Martin alluded to earlier, which is a little bit higher than we expected it to be at 73. We still need some, do a little bit more editing of the program. That actually included state highways. We're going to be taking those out because we're not responsible for the pavement on state highways. But we still think it's probably going to be better than what we thought it was with our previous program. The most prominent recommendation throughout the city, which is a good thing, is preventative maintenance. And those are the lower-cost things that we can do over time to keep our pavement conditions up, such as crack sealing. Some of the things that we're not currently doing that we could be doing is chip ceilings, slurry ceilings and things like that, which are lower-cost, wealthy selective of where we use some of those techniques. But they are good tools in the toolbox we do for preventative maintenance. The blue is more of the rehabilitation. This is more repairing patches, doing grinding, more overlays and things like that. The yellow, which doesn't show up a whole lot on this map, is a really good sign because those are the streets that need to be reconstructed and you won't see a whole lot of those throughout the city. So that's actually very good news. The deferred maintenance refers to streets that are in good condition at this time and actually do not need any treatments to occur at this time. This shows you from a planning perspective where the pavement condition is in the different neighborhoods. And it gives us a chance to think about what our gold should actually be. We have the East Plateau, which is almost at 82. We have the West Hill is at about 68. And up above, it shows you by neighborhood percentage of arterial streets in each one of those areas. City Center, as you can imagine, has the most arterials percentage-wise of the planning areas. Then below that, it shows the total percent of the network. For City Center, for example, is 24% of the streets are arterial streets. But it only poses 8% of our entire network for this, for the city. Next, I wanted to show you the distribution of mileage or actually this is showing linear feet, but the graphic is indicated or is meant to indicate that most of our streets are local streets. We have smaller amount of collector, minor arterials. But for the most part, from a pavement standpoint, the local streets are really where the needs are probably at because we cannot get grants for the arterials. A lot of our arterial streets, we can get grants for or we have projects such as Rainier, which will repair the pavement when we do the major projects. But where our need probably is the greatest is probably going to be in our local streets as far as, from a funding standpoint, really requires local funding to keep those streets up. To the right shows the distribution of repairs that are needed on the streets. On the local network, fortunately, preventative maintenance is the largest category, which I mentioned earlier. Those are more of the low-cost treatments that are needed. The blue area shows the rehabilitation that is required for the local network, the collector network and the minor and arterial, moving from left to right. But the good news is that it's not as bad as we had seen in the previous surveys. Move on to the next slide here. This shows some of the tools that we have in this new program. And as I mentioned earlier, these are tools we're going to train staff how to use. It's a newer program for us. There's a lot of things we can do as far as analysis. But as you saw on that last slide, on the overall network for rehabilitation, these are pavements throughout the whole city that are rated between 30 and 70. If we were to do nothing at all, we would, or as far as increasing our funding is concerned, if we kept on our current level of funding for these streets of about $1 million, we would actually see a decline over time in our pavement condition index. Whereas if we put more money into it, we use in this particular scenario 3.5 million, we could bring those pavements up to a much better condition. And these are tools that, depending on what council wants as a goal, we can basically figure out what it would cost to actually meet that particular goal. We are still working with our Maintenance Division to figure out the cost for some of the preventative maintenance techniques that we need to insert to the program. So those are some of the things that we're still working on to fine-tune our funding scenarios. Next, and I'm almost to the end of the slides. This shows the pavement condition index by the type of street. So for the local connectors, we still are about 70. It's closer to the 74. Collector streets are about the same as the minor arterials, right around 73. And our major arterials, not surprisingly, are doing better, almost to 78. Pavement condition index, this probably is what I mentioned earlier, is that we've been able to successfully get a lot of grants for arterials. And of course, a lot of our projects that we do, capital projects, improve the pavement. So, and those are mainly on arterials. So you'll see those actually doing a lot better as far as the pavement condition index is concerned. So that pretty much gives you a snapshot of where we are right now. And one on the next slide. Seems to be a slide missing. I thought I had a next step slide there, but I think I can remember. Oh, here we go. I guess we have it right on this particular graphic. Our next step will be to refine the new pavement management system that we're learning to use. We are going to be, at this point, thinking that we want to at least, rather than use a 70, we'll want to basically keep our gold at where we are now. And obviously, we want your feedback on that. We're thinking that's probably where we would want to start is where we are now and do some funding scenarios for keeping the pavements where they are now and bringing that back to you of what funding levels we would need to actually keep these pavement condition indexes that you see on the screen to the left, where they are now. So that'll be the next steps we'll be working on to bring back to council. And that'll provide you a recommendation on what type of capital investments that we should be pursuing and prioritizing what type of treatments we should be doing on our streets as well. As I mentioned earlier, some of the techniques we're not currently doing, we're going to have to work with our Maintenance Division on seeing whether we can do those in the future, are things like the chip seals, which are very low-cost preventative maintenance things that we're not currently doing, but would help us from a budget standpoint. But there, I guess I should probably pause if there's any questions on the pavement condition assessment presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember Corman.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Jim, great presentation, really interesting. Thank you for this. As you made your way through it, in the past, I know councils discussed the, oh, just sort of the aesthetics and driveability aspects of the condition of the pavement. And we've sort of set a goal based on, you know, whatever number we picked, 75, 76, 77, or whatever. But, you know, I thought what you said in the beginning was really interesting about the cost of repair. And, you know, I know there's a street in my neighborhood, for instance, that I saw on your chart was one that would go to rehabilitation. And yeah, my experience, when I drive on it, I can see cracks in it and here and there even plants starting to take root in the cracks and stuff. So rehabilitation makes sense. But I think also your point about doing it sooner rather than later so that it doesn't have to be completely dug up and replaced versus having, you know, the cracks aggressively sealed. And where I'm going with this is I'm thinking that while, you know, while we can sort of say what general level we want the streets to be at for driveability and aesthetics, I think equally important or perhaps more important, I'd love to see the recommendation, you know, that is the least expensive way to manage the streets. That is to say, if you took this model and you ran it and you assumed we were aggressive about rehabilitating these streets versus, you know, waiting, how many of them would deteriorate to where they have to be completely dug up? And what is the optimum so that you spend the least amount of money, say, over the next 20 years? And for me, that figure, given our current, you know, sort of recessionary climate, would be really important. So if we ended up doing over five years a big public works to dig up a bunch of city, not dig up, but do a lot of crack sealing on a bunch of city streets and that was temporarily expensive, but we knew we were preventing a lot of deterioration and more aggressive costs later, you know, that that's something we could either do outright or bond for or something. Anyways, so I'd like to just ask you to go a little further with the model and try and predict what would be the perfect number to hit to have the least costs over, say, the next couple of decades.
Okay, let's get feedback, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmembers, do you have any more questions at this time about pavements? I don't see anybody raising their hand, but let me ask you something. I know that over the years, we have been talking about this on our retreats. And it has been something that, even though we know how important it is to maintain and as Councilmember Corman mentioned, to repair on timely manner, so that way, if we make a large investment right now on the long run, is the best thing to do so we can save actually money. Would you also bring recommendations about, what are the funding? Where, because you talk about grants, but I know that the grants that we get normally are for the big intersections and where the money to get for those small, little streets that are always, you know, failing on the cracks because grants are not for the, normally are not for those, you know, for the irregular, you know, street, not a large arterial. Because I don't remember, but I remember that for arterials, you can be very successful finding grants and I very appreciate how hard you work on that. But I don't remember for local streets having a grant program.
That's true. We'd probably be relying upon something like the Transportation Benefit District, which fortunately, those are still available to us now as a tool. I know council-matically, a lot of cities have done the $20 vehicle license tab fee. And I know Jan Hahn has done some calculations on what that would bring the city and it's close to $2 million annually. I think that we've also talked about in the past the increase in the B and O tax as well. So there are several funding options. We certainly, after we do what Randy mentioned, is what should we do to optimize the system and how much will that cost to optimize the system and what our goals will be? We certainly can start looking at funding options for those local streets because as I mentioned, that's really where the need probably is the most is for those local streets.
Thank you, Jim. So you can continue with your presentation.
Okay. I'll move into the next part, which is the walkways and sidewalks. And this is really a twofold problem. I know that we talk a lot about the lack of sidewalk infrastructure that we have. But we also have a real problem with the aging sidewalk infrastructure. And I'll get to the locations where that's probably the worst in the presentation. I'll talk a little bit about the recent projects that we've done, both from a maintenance standpoint with our own crews and from a capital project standpoint, our current funding levels and then talk a little bit about the previous comprehensive sidewalk study that was done and the projects that we still haven't been able to complete due to lack of funding for those projects. So what are people asking for? I think it's pretty obvious. These are some of the pictures around the city. Near Nelson Middle School, these are children walking, basically. Fortunately, they have a shoulder to walk upon, but they're not separated sidewalk. There's fairly straight street, which volumes and speed can be fairly high. There's obviously spots that have sidewalks and then all of a sudden, they disappear and people are having to go around the shoulder if they don't want to walk in a ditch. Some of these are very high-volume roads. Some of them are, you know, lower-volume roads, but there's just no place for a citizen to walk other than right out in the middle of the street because parking is on both sides of the street. So these are some of the obvious things that we hear from the public that we need some additional work done on making the city more walkable and accessible for our citizens. The second problem is really an aging infrastructure problem. Up in the Highlands area in particular, we have sidewalk that's basically the same grade as the street in a lot of cases. The aggregate's showing, so it's very slippery. Moss grows on it. But a lot of it's just aging sidewalk that we have throughout the city that have gone past their life expectancy. And we do have a sidewalk rehabilitation program, but it's funded $250,000 a year on average every year. And it hasn't been enough to actually make a big dent in the large need that we have. As far as an inventory is concerned, this graphic shows the amount of miles, centerline miles is what the Y-axis is there, by neighborhood. So for the Highlands, for example, we're showing three columns there. If you add those three columns up, it would add up to about, it looks like 70, almost 80 miles, centerline miles of streets. Then it's broken down into which, how many miles? There's no sidewalk. How many miles, there's one? One side of the road has sidewalks and then the green is where we want to be, where we would have sidewalk on both sides of the street, at least for arterials, that would be preferable. Sometimes, if we could even get sidewalk on one side of the street and some of the lower-volume roads, that would be, that would be great as well. But that's, you can see, it really varies throughout the city. We obviously have a lot of sidewalk or streets up in the Highlands area. But what this doesn't tell you is the condition. As I mentioned earlier, the Highlands may have over 40 miles of streets with sidewalks on both sides, but the condition is in very bad shape. So it doesn't tell the full story because of the condition there. The Valley area actually has quite a high percentage of their streets with sidewalk on both sides. So that might be, that chart might be one we'd want to go towards is where we have it basically declining. We have sidewalk on most of the streets and then one side, we have quite a few of them and then a smaller portion of them have the no sidewalk at all. So in some areas, it's better than in others. But again, it just shows basically the inventory of where we do and don't have sidewalk, either on both sides or one side of the street at least. The old sidewalk study that we did was completed back in 2008. That was, didn't include the Benson Annexation Area. Back then, we had 266 miles of sidewalk. Now we have over almost 100 miles more of street segments and sidewalks to take care of. And back in the old study, they were prioritizing some of the factors that we looked at. Pedestrian safety, obviously, whether it was on school walking route, some of the tractors such as a park, so on, missing links, the relative cost of the sidewalk, and whether it needed right-of-way or not to actually build it. And many of the top priority segments that were done or identified back then still aren't done today. Next slide will show you where those are. These are from the last study we did. We have some high-priority ones, but there just wasn't ever enough money within the sidewalk program to actually build any of these particular projects. I think they added up to almost $3 million, maybe a little bit more, these five projects. There just wasn't enough to actually pursue those, given the funding levels. Well, we have built some sidewalks. Most of them are as a result of a grant. On 116th, it was one in particular that was built in late 2017, just north of southeast Petrovitsky Road, from Petrovitsky all the way up to the post office there. It was about 1,100 feet, and it was actually over $1 million to do this project. It was a federal project, so it did cost us a little bit more because of that. But it's very expensive to build sidewalks, even if you don't build them to the complete street standards. As you can see here, we have some planter areas and other areas we don't, based on, we didn't want to purchase right-of-way, wanted to keep the cost down for that particular segment. Down below is a much more cost-effective project, but it was, I don't know, 300 or 400 feet. But our maintenance crews did this. So at times, when they're available, maintenance crews will do some additional work, but they're limited by day labor laws. I think it's up to $35,000 project they can do in-house. So, but we take the opportunity where we can to make a difference. And it really does make a big difference, some of these small projects for some of the neighborhoods. These are different ways that we get sidewalks built in the city. As I already mentioned, the walkway program. And since 2015, that 116th project really was the only one we really were able to accomplish because of funding. The maintenance one was 300 to 400, about 300, 300 or 400 linear feet back in 2017, got that done. It's hard to quantify, but private development was in a lot of sidewalks, of course. Our new development standards require sidewalks in the new flats. So that gives us a great opportunity to get sidewalks in the newer neighborhoods. But unfortunately, that doesn't help us with the current conditions in the older neighborhoods. And obviously, capital projects is another area that we were able to make progress. Rainier is one that's coming up, where we have some very old sidewalks in front of Tommy's there on Rainier that we'll be able to replace with newer sidewalks. So we get sidewalk replacement done as well with our major capital projects. So moving forward, our staff recommendation is to go ahead and start our conference, a new comprehensive sidewalk study as part of our next budget cycle. So we'll be working on our work plans here in January, probably even in December. And we make, and plan on prioritizing getting that study updated. It'll include both testing where it's missing and where sidewalks are needed to be reconstructed. And we'll probably model that similar to our Trails and Bicycle Master Plan that we completed a few years ago in conjunction with the Community Services Department and use similar type of criteria. But we'll bring that back to you at a later date before we get too far into that process. But as a result or an outcome of that updated study, we'll be able to bring you a prioritized framework showing the gaps around the city and resulting list of projects. And then, as we talked about earlier, we'll have to start talking about how those can get funded because we don't want to repeat what happened last time as we did this and weren't able to get enough funding available to build our high-priority projects in the last study. So funding will have to be identified as well to build the projects that come out of the new study. And with that, concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Could you please stop sharing your screen so that way I can see all the council members? Thank you. Council member Prince.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Jim, on that slide you've shown us, the how many streets have sidewalks, that slide? Two related questions. One, how many of those streets were near schools? Because I know with schools, you have to have some, can't remember what they call it, but there's a program, a safe.
Yeah, there's a, right. All the schools have to have identified safe routes to school. Yeah, they all have to identify that. And we work very closely with them, especially on crossings in particular. But I don't think that either.
You know, that slide, how many of those that said that there were sidewalks on both sides?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe the data actually were able to identify that. I don't know if Banji, if you're able to chime in there. I don't think the data was able to sort by location of schools, if I'm not mistaken, but Banji.
That would be in the bigger context of this, once we do the study. And that is a GIS problem that we can have analyzed. But we have it, that was an analysis in our GIS system right now, so.
But the, yeah, the data doesn't show the schools, right? It doesn't have a field for the schools.
It can, but we didn't today.
Correct, okay.
And then my other related parts of that, back on the safe routes to school. What I've noticed on 116th up in Benson is that you have sidewalks leading up to school, and then once you get past the school, the sidewalk stops. Is there, what's the reasoning behind that?
It's hard to say without looking at that particular location. But typically, it's in the annexation areas where the development standards were such that basically, when the development went in, the county did not require the sidewalks to be installed. But, you know, over time, development standards change. So where you see the sidewalks, it may have been a later date where the developer had to put in sidewalks and were diminished is where the standards were different at that time. But it would be hard to say without a specific location and doing a little research to say exactly that situation.
If you look at either Cascade Elementary or Renton Park Elementary, you'll see that once you pass the schools, the sidewalk stops. And my concern on that is you have kids that are walking the other way to get home, and they're still, you know, they're walking on the shoulder, basically. Or walkers, pedestrians anyway, but really, you know, those kids, you know, their house may not be right near the school. They may have to go a few more blocks. So if you can, you know, look into that, maybe there's an explanation or something, but.
Sure, we can do that. Yep, we can do that.
Thank you, Council Member Prince. Council Member Renegati.
Thank you, Madam President. So looking at how it is that we would be able to pay for these improvements, are we looking at the same kinds of funding sources for both the streets and the sidewalks? Are they, would we be potentially trying to compete with ourselves for dollars?
Well, there are probably some different funding mechanisms for sidewalks versus the pavements. TBD can be used for both of them if the council wanted to pass the Transportation Benefit District. But sidewalks, especially the neighborhood sidewalks, a lot of cities use local improvement districts to actually fund those. That's, it depends on the circumstances, but sometimes they're very successful. Sometimes they're very challenging because they can be very expensive for the residents as well. But there are, those are the, some of the differences is local improvement districts are sometimes used more for sidewalks and pavements. That's usually never the case.
There's also a variety of different funding sources that we're going to have to take a look at. As Jim mentioned, there's Transportation Benefit District, the Safe Route to School funding. It's going to be, you know, probably a mix of a lot of different types to really become, to really develop an effective program. Some may be just different fees that are set different ways. I've been in a city where the responsibility for the sidewalk was the property owner, and at the sale, at the time of the sale of the home, they didn't, sidewalks were needed in repair. That was a part of the assessment that was placed back on the property owner. It's just there's different ways of doing it. And I think we just have to sort of get creative and sort of develop this menu of things that might be available for the city to consider going forward.
Thank you, Council Member. Thank you, Council Member Renegati. Thank you, Martin and Jim. Council Member McCraven.
Thank you, Madam President. So I definitely have some of the questions that have already been asked. So I have a new one I certainly want to ask, which is where does the Bicycles and Trails Master Plan fit into this in terms of some of the road research things? Because I know we're looking at pedestrians and we're looking at maintenance of roads. Are there opportunities within any of this to complete some of those missing links for bike lanes too? Because I know we don't necessarily want the bikes on the sidewalks in some areas too. pedestrian bicycle problems that might exist.
I love Banji.
What was nice about the Trails and Bicycle Master Plan is that the intent was to build an interconnected network. So that started with a multi-use trail system where it doesn't matter where you could bike and walk. And so theoretically, the new study would build it where everything connects to each other. So it would build on the Trails and Bicycle Master Plan where it's the level of safety and the least amount of traffic stress. So that's the beauty of having another study where it's the, the less stress would mean on the busier streets, it's increasing the separation from the traffic or widening the width of the sidewalk. So it's the what are you building and how are you building it?
GIS overlays as well. For example, as we get a better inventory of the overall sidewalk networking condition, we can start overlaying the current trails and the proposed trails and things like that. So you can start looking at the analysis of where the missing links might be and where some connectivity can be made between trails and sidewalks within public right-of-way.
It's, these are not separate documents. They're certainly complementary doctrines. And the thing is to have it built upon each other. So as you look at the street plan and the pavement plan, you start to look at striping. At that point in time, that's when you start looking at bike lanes and capacity. And then back to the Trails and Bike Master Plan, how that fills out, how, as Banji said, how you create these networks and the connectivity portions, and then the sidewalk portion. It's all building upon each other to create a transportation network that serves the community.
Thank you, Council Member McCraven. Any more questions? So in the past, at least in the last six years that I have been in the council, sidewalks have always been part of our retreat, and we have talked about the importance. I think as a council, we do understand the needs of sidewalks. First of all, because what Council Member Prince said, it has always been our priority is safety and around schools and children, and it has been one of our biggest concerns. And second, because people ask for sidewalks. Some of the emails that I receive frequently are people trying to convince me of the importance of sidewalks. And I want to tell everybody that I know how important it is to have a walkable city. And when they told me that it's for exercise purposes, for being able to go to point A to point B without using a car, I am there. I think we all understand that part and how important it is. But I think that after so many years to be talking with sidewalks, right now is the next step of you guys bringing us the strong proposal for funding for move to the next step of, as you mentioned, Martin, what is the combination of things that we can do that are going to be more effective? And prioritize what are the projects that we need to do as soon as possible? Because of course, we, safety is one of the, our biggest priorities. Obviously, schools have to be, I will assume that, you know, sidewalks around the schools should be one of the priorities. But also, again, bringing our equity lens, making sure that all the region in Renton have the same quality and the same standards for safety on sidewalks. So with that, I'm going to open again the floor. If anybody has any more questions or comments in regard to sidewalks? Okay, since that we're okay. So Martin, Jim, Banji, thank you very much. This was a very good presentation. And looking forward to have more conversations about this in our next retreat.
Thank you for input.
Yeah, we are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the Renton Chamber of Commerce update, and I want to welcome Diane Dobson. Diane, thank you for being with us again.
Hi there. Thanks for having me. So I am, I am going to share my screen after all. Let me make sure I've got the right information here. Can you see that there? Okay.
Yes, yep.
Perfect. So as update for introduction, I'm Diane Dobson. I'm the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. We are a nonprofit within the community of Renton that is here for community and nonprofit and business support. Nonprofit being, of course, a type of business, just a different tax status. But business support and networking. We, I was, thank you very much, Council President Perez, for the invitation to join you to kind of give you an update on the chamber's activities and functions thus far. I was hired in February, and as you know, we rolled right into COVID in March with our shutdown occurring about mid-March. And so I don't need to dwell too much on COVID. What we're seeing is COVID is certainly nondiscriminate on who it infects and who it impacts. Currently in King County, we've got 34,000, over 34,000 positive cases, up over 500 cases in the past 24 hours, and with over 6,000 new cases in the past two weeks. In Renton, we have had over 1,900 positive cases. That's up 23 cases in the past 24 hours and over 300 cases in the past 14 days. So we are certainly trending higher than King County rate, which is consistent with South King County being disproportionately impacted. Thus far, we have seen 47 businesses close to date, and that's what we have received report of. Often you will, but the last thing somebody wants to do is report a business closing, so we might hear about it without an actual report coming in. I am no health official that is coming directly from King County dashboard. So we jumped in at the chamber and started immediately with PPE distribution. We have a business relationship with counterparts in Linyi, China, where we have a business-friendly as opposed to a sister-city relationship. We had 100,000 masks shipped in. These were donated by our partners in Linyi. The chamber absorbed the shipping on that. We then received more masks from King County. We've partnered in Skyway, which is unincorporated King County up there for business and resident distribution. And we have distributed masks for small businesses and hand sanitizer here in Renton. We had a PPE distribution today. We have another one tomorrow and one on Thursday as well. And we're giving, because we had the allocation from King County for businesses, but we also brought in masks from China, and that was their donation in contribution to trying to keep our community safe. So we have those masks that we're giving out to residents as well. We've been out over 150,000 masks to date between businesses and residents. And so safety was our first and foremost concern as people returned to work. I want to give a huge shout-out to our Board of Directors. We have a Board of Directors that has continued with process and function between board meetings, executive meetings, getting involved with our city meetings, with the City of Renton Community and Economic Development. They've been involved with de-intensification facility meetings, the Merrill updates and information. But what I think was, is really important to point out that our Board of Directors made themselves available daily for 30 to 60 minutes beginning Monday, March 30th, and continued daily until May 30th. We had one to five members of our board that were available via Zoom for not just chamber support, but business support for anybody that wanted to call in and receive advice or ask questions. For me, being a new chamber CEO, that was critical for me and my support, and I would say my mental, dare I say, mental stability in moving forward and processing some of the things that we were experiencing. So we transitioned to virtual, as did the rest of the world. We went virtual with our board meetings, ambassador meetings, legislative education, hospitality, our business development, and we've had virtual events. What we also did, though, was we trained various groups on how they could go virtual too. We had the Rotary Reach Out, Concerns Not Meeting, Alliance Club Reach Out, concern that they weren't meeting. So we went through and provided instructions and training for the members, both on a group setting as well as individually, and facilitated meetings with them until they were, I say, independent to walk upon their own and are now conducting their own virtual meetings. We recently started the Coffee with the Cop with the Renton Police Department virtually. That was a program that was started with the Renton Chamber and Starbucks and the Renton Police Department a number of years ago and went national. And so we have started with the Renton Police Department to bring that virtual again. So we, just like everybody else, had to stop, pivot, and provide new types of business support. We tried to be creative, to encourage people to get out to support businesses. We highlighted 75 different businesses through Business Bingo, 63 businesses through Business Flash Drives. That was raising funds or purchasing gift certificates. We brought in 26 different food trucks. We started Renton Live, and I'll share more on that. We started Renton Junction Blog with 64 blogs upwards of 1 to 10 businesses highlighted in the blogs. We transitioned the urban market, which was an in-person market here in the chamber, to a virtual market, providing makers opportunities to sell virtually, sim-market support, and Lake Toberfest at the Hyatt. So Renton Live is a weekly, I'll call it a broadcast, that we push out on YouTube and Facebook Live. It gets between 1,000 to 4,000 views an episode. We've been able to, and it was something we started during the stay-home period as a creative way to keep people connected, talking about businesses and things that were happening in the community. So over the past 30 weeks or so, we have been able to highlight 95 different businesses, 83 nonprofits, and then highlight 102 community activities or events. These are chamber, both chamber member and non-chamber member. And I think that's important to point out that as COVID hit, our board recognized the fact that we're here for the economic welfare of the entire community. And while, of course, chamber member prioritized time-wise, we have made ourselves available to any business that needs support or assistance. So we have also, through Renton Live and through the Zoom approach and virtual approach, have been able to have what we call community conversations. And we've been able to tackle some of the challenging conversations. After the murder of George Floyd, we had conversations from the heart, featuring 14 of our community leaders talking about hope and justice, unyielding roots. Unyielding Roots is a DEI and equity approach and, and a cultural awareness. The Breaking Down Barriers, we have bi-weekly meetings with the facility operators at the de-intensification facility. And then the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And that one is a real pride point for us as we have partnered with the Equity Consultant for the City of Renton, Ms. Benita Horn, and Priddy Shridhar from the city has been instrumental in processing as well. And what we are doing as a chamber is leveraging the resources that we have available to us to bring in opportunities for education and training and conversations for the smaller businesses that might not have access to those same resources. So you will see in 2021 a monthly schedule of trainings and resources, things, for example, hiring with an equity lens, retention, recruitment, training. So really trying to do our part to move the needle towards opportunities in the community. And those are open not only to chamber businesses, but Renton businesses and Renton community members alike, recognizing the, the true importance and value of the same. So the de-intensification facility took up a, a large part of our, our time, our energy. We had, we fielded over 150 phone calls about the facility in lack of information that was provided from King County. We did outreach to over 160 businesses. We've provided advocacy for businesses in or near the facility there. We advocated until we were able to achieve access, for business access to that King County mitigation account that was originally just open to the city and government agencies. We advocated for the King County Council budget modification for 2021, so there will be funding available for mitigation support to continue as long as the shelter remains in Renton. That's for businesses as well as the city. We have attended and testified at King County Council meetings. We have participated in weekly, bi-weekly, and monthly stakeholder meetings with the county. We have weekly meetings with King County Councilmember Dave Up the Grove. We've got the bi-weekly community conversations with the DESC facility operators. We have coordinated with the Washington State Department of Transportation for a SEPTED approach. One of the concerns with the neighboring businesses was they were fearful that the facility itself was attracting individuals experiencing homelessness to begin camping around the facility. And rather than pointing the fingers or, or of blame, we've asked the Washington State Department of Transportation to cut that foliage up, so it reduces the occurrence of, of camping. What our, our approach has been with the de-intensification facility is we recognize that the chamber's not going to be the, take the role of moving or getting the, the facility to move. What we need to do is provide the support to mitigate the impact to the, the surrounding businesses in the community. The bi-weekly conversations that we have allows an opportunity for businesses in the area, as well as the facility operators, to have those real-time conversations about challenges that are impacting the businesses. It's also provides opportunity for awareness in the community of some of the needs that are being met. Because what, what cannot and should not be overlooked is that those are people in that facility and many that are very vulnerable and in need of, of services and care. And as we move forward through COVID, it will become an even, very likely, an even more needed service. So with that in mind, we have connected various resources with the facility to, to maximize their support for the people that are staying in the facility as well. If, if it's here, if we can maximize the benefit to the people that are staying in the facility, it is certainly of, not of their consequence or fault of the, of the impact some of the individuals within the facility are choosing to make within our community. That being said, the, the impact upon the businesses and the surrounding community has certainly been undeniable and, and very tangible. So, which is why we spend so much time working in, in advocacy for the same. We have provided other types of business support. We've done technical assistance to over 70 businesses. We have negotiated between landlords and tenants. There is no moratorium on commercial rent. And so it is, sometimes it's been a matter of talking to the landlords and letting them know the benefits of deferral that are available to them through their funding and lending locations as well. We've provided connection for translation services. We have done legal support for some of our members. We have sent letters to tenants. We've negotiated with unemployment. And we have provided over 40 webinars and trainings on things such as payroll protection, small business assistance, application for grants and loans, and other things that are very COVID-impacting and relevant and brought about, as well as things such as selling and business skills that may need or encourage focus during the COVID approach. We have brought in legislative connections for our businesses. And so these are individuals that we have brought in through either our legislative, our legislative committee, or we have connected our businesses with direct. And, and we've provided webinars and support and, and opportunities for connection there. So community support. We, in addition to the, the support that we're providing for our businesses, we have tried to maintain an active approach within the community as well. We served with the Ms. Benita Horn with the Census Ambassador Program, provided coupons and incentivized individuals in completing the census that they then received coupons for various businesses in the downtown core in trying to encourage and stimulate some foot traffic to those businesses. The chamber then absorbed the cost of those coupons that were redeemed, so there was no expense to our business community. We worked with communities and schools in Renton in collaborating meal delivery from our local businesses. So we raised funds from the community, purchased meals from our local businesses, and then they were able to be delivered to the families through the mentor programs. We worked closely with state representatives, Zach Hudgens and Steve Berquist on the South King Food Fighters Coalition, where they worked with the Tukwila Food Bank and many of our local restaurants in providing catered meals that then were delivered to, especially during the stay home, to some of the seniors and the individuals that are more vulnerable health approach that we, we encouraged to stay home. So this was bringing food to them. One of the great things about that program was, it was, I say, they taught a man to fish versus just delivering the fish to the man. And as individuals were receiving the meals, they also then had follow-up connection on how they could reach and achieve resources on their own in the future. We have conducted food drives with Sustainable Renton and the Renton Lions Club for the Emergency Feeding Program and Sustainable Renton. And then the, the real gluttony or, or the tough things, like the Halloween trunk or treat with the city, which if you did not have the opportunity to participate in, I believe that the adults there had far more fun than the children did. And you could see the sense of joy as it was a real sense of normalcy. And the kids coming through looked like they were in Disneyland. And it was really an absolutely amazing and wonderful event that the city put on, and the chamber was honored to be a part of that in, in distributing candy. So thank you for, for providing that. And then we partnered with Brotherton Cadillac and Kind TV and did a Halloween trunk or treat at the chamber as well on Halloween. And that was more intended for the neighborhood here locally, so they had something to, to attend as well. Partnerships and support. Some of the partnerships that, and we've worked with the East King Chambers Coalition that has about 13 different chambers, the Southside Chambers Coalition that has eight different chambers. And, and that is not new during COVID, of course. During COVID, however, we have extended additional relations with the East Side Together Campaign, One East Side Restart of 425, the Smart Task Force, which is the Valley Cities and led up by Seattle Southside. We've been, we, when COVID first struck, we were meeting weekly with Seattle Southside in the Kent Chamber so we could have a concerted Valley approach. We partnered with the Save Local Tukwila and working closely with the Association of Washington Businesses and the Washington Chamber of Commerce executives. And that's where you're going to see some, some advocacy and support coming up that I'll touch on in a minute. So with the community, like Renton Live and the Renton Junction, and, and we have, we have really tried to continue with a sense of normalcy, hope, and, and highlights of positives. We were able to continue our after-hours, our ambassador meetings, the virtual coffee with the chamber. We had weekly chamber check-ins. We were able to transition our Ahead of the Class event to a virtual event. We had a golf tournament with tea times. We have our Ahead of the Care virtual event next week and then the Gala in a Box. So just, just trying as much as we can to keep things normal. So fast forward November 15th, yesterday, and the infamous Governor's Press Conference and the newest restrictions and the impacts on businesses. Already said that 47 businesses have closed their, their doors, at least 47 businesses have closed their doors. It's, we have the newest restrictions yesterday. And these are, these are, with one fell swoop, have taken a lot of hope out of a lot of businesses that were, that were barely hanging on. The, the challenge there is there was no warning. I mean, we, we knew something was coming. The numbers were continuing to rise. But in, in communication with state representatives, even Congressman Smith's office as, as recent as Friday, nobody knew that these new restrictions were, were going to be imposed when they were. And so the, the, the restrictions that are put in place are, are going to, are going to take a toll on our businesses. We had one meeting with a local bank lender who anticipated we would see a loss of 40 to 60% of our businesses through COVID. I think that is incredibly aggressive. However, now with these new restrictions that are in, in place upon us, when we did, I did a site tour in February with a new business coming to town, and this is just downtown core I'm speaking of. We had one location that had a verbal lease agreement on it. Otherwise, we had no vacancies downtown. You go through downtown now, there's a vacancy on every single block. Now, that's, that's not to, to forget. We have had some new businesses come in too. So there is life that is, that is continuing. But this is, this has taken a toll. One of the biggest challenges with our downtown core is it was budding and new, which that means new businesses don't have the books to have that same type of financial support available to them that many of our established businesses do. So you see, see a number of businesses that have folded just on the mere fact that they are unable to receive that same, that same support. And that is really unfortunate. So we are, with the newest restrictions as of, came out yesterday, as of today, we are working with the Association of Washington Businesses and the Washington Chamber of Commerce executives to work with the, the Washington Hospitality Association for advocacy on the businesses. One, one of the, I say, running start opportunities that we had for awareness was on the contact tracing, because that is something that we've been asking King County for, for at least three months for information on contact tracing. And King County has explained their contact tracing process to us, which has then caused real question on, on the information that was reported yesterday as to some of the highest rates of incidents spread with COVID. Now, to, I'm not minimizing the impact of COVID. I'm not minimizing the realness of, of the virus. I have, I've personally lost 12 individuals related to COVID-related deaths and have a number of individuals that have contracted the virus and now are being told that they have, may have permanent lung, brain, heart challenges and, and health concerns. So by no means am I minimizing the impact, the real impact and concern with the virus. But I am, I am concerned about the equitable, I say equitable, the, maybe the, the approach of restrictions upon the businesses that have been selected. And there are concerns to that end and with the information being reported, but that'll be a soapbox that, that I'll, I'll go on to. What can we do? Right now, we, the city was incredibly generous with the, the bulk of the CARES funds being distributed to the businesses. I mean, $1.4 million was distributed. That funded approximately 180 businesses of the 350 or 380 businesses that applied. So half the businesses that applied received funding. One of our concerns was a lot of businesses didn't know about the grant process that was available. There were a lot of businesses that were ineligible to apply. Like I said, there was the, they, all of the new businesses with less than two years brick and mortar. Two years brick and mortar was one of the requirement, or brick and mortar, and then two-year, two years in business was some of the requirements for the City of Renton grants. And so there were, there are a number of businesses. So what we are doing is, and Mayor Pavoni partnered to, to produce a video to ask our community to chip in and do a, a local drive within the community to try to raise funds that we can grant, business grants, because the, the funds just aren't there yet. And in absence of any guaranteed funds, we're trying to raise the funds ourselves through the, the community. And I think that is, that is it as far as what I have to share. A lot of words, a lot of slides, a lot of print. So I will throw it out to you all if you have any questions.
Thank you, Diane. Great presentation. And, and we know how challenging, how challenging this year has been for our business community and as well for you guys. And I really want to thank you because you guys really read fine in so many levels, the, what is the role of the Chamber of Commerce in Renton. You guys have to reinvent yourselves in order to keep up with this new normal. And it has been very challenging. And, and I'm very proud of you and I'm very appreciative of all the, all the work that you have done. With that, council members, do you have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Council member.
Yeah, I, I also want to thank you, Diane, for the presentation. It's really sobering, you know, seeing the numbers, the, the impacted businesses. I mean, like you, I've known people that have perished from COVID and they're, you know, the front of my mind. But, but really, right along with them is these business owners that have invested their lives in many cases in opening these businesses in Renton. And, and I just, I just would want to make sure they understand that as a council member, it's, it's really hard for me to see this much impact to all of them. You know, the ones that have left and then the ones that are struggling. And I, you know, and I, I know there's kind of business reasons for this, but I feel like the businesses, they, they come to us through the front door, and we have ribbon cutting and ceremonies and celebrate their investment in our city for a variety of reasons. Many times, they sort of, I feel like they kind of leave through the back door where we, we hear about it a, a month or two later. And, and I understand if somebody's struggling in their business, they, they don't have, you know, it's not a priority for them necessarily to communicate to us, you know, that, that they're going out of business. But, but I would just want to make sure we convey that. out of business, but, but I would just want to make sure we convey that, that, you know, these people that have invested are as meaningful to us the day their business closes as they were when it opened, and I would, I would hope that they could find a way back into business in Renton sometime in the future. Our, our hearts are with them, and I'm really glad for the Chamber's advocacy and creating a cohesiveness, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmember Benedetti?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to again say thank you. So I, I know that these are sentiments that are echoed by my fellow council members. Just thank you for the hard work and for the advocacy. And I also had a very specific thank you, which is that I know that you've spent quite a bit of time on Renton Live, advertising or, you know, or generating interest around city events and featuring many of our, our city staff and the great work that they're doing. So I just want to echo, or echo the members of the council and then also add a special appreciation for that. Thank you.
It's, it has been, I would say, some of the, well, with the Renton Live, we have had the opportunity to highlight, like I said, business chambers and non-chamber businesses alike. And so it has been a, a great opportunity for us to learn more about businesses and to be able to uplift and provide voice for a number of organizations that you might not otherwise hear about. Gives us opportunity to make some connections that, we don't have that, that same in-person networking and approach. And it has been really fun to highlight the things going on in our community. That has been an absolute joy for, for the entire team that have, we've been working with, and what a delight it has been to engage with you all who have joined us on a, on a personal level. And if you ask me what one of my, my favorite memories is thus far, is when someone asked Councilmember O'Halloran about what she was reading, and, and she paused and ran off the screen and came back with her books, and, and you all have demonstrated, it's nice for the general public to know that, and to be reminded and remember that you all are people too. You, you know, put your pants on one leg at a time, and, and you have families, and you have feelings, and, and sometimes, I would say, elected officials, there's so much more, and thank you all for being so vulnerable with your approach and partnership and collaboration in bringing the joy and news and, and information into our community. We appreciate you, and thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Hi, thank you, Diane. So I just wanted to make sure, for the chip in, can the information on how to make a donation, is that directly on the Chamber's website?
It is. If you go to our website, which is GoRenton.com, the very first item that pops up is a link for that chip in, for the grant program.
Okay. And then my question also is, who's, who's managing that for you? It's just curiosity. Are you doing that through the foundation, or?
It is One East Side. So one of the challenges with many of the 501(c)(3)'s is their human service approach. And so One East Side has a nonprofit that has a more liberal business approach that gives us that opportunity.
Right, awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran. Any more questions? Councilmember, bye.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Diane, for, for being here and your presentation and for all the work that you've done for our community and our small businesses. So we know there is a lot of needs in our community and that, you know, there is competing interests and priorities. What are some specific ways that council members, whether collectively or individually, can help with the cause you're doing, particularly small businesses?
Yeah, so there's, of course, we've touched on the chip in and spreading the word, encouraging individuals to, to chip in what they can, if they can't chip in, to, to share the information. Support our small businesses, and the convenience of, of some of the mail order companies is, is hard to beat, and the pricing is, is hard to beat. But when you are making a purchase through a local business, you are doing so much more than purchasing that item for yourself. You're supporting your neighbor, your, your friends, your, your community. So when you have that opportunity to, to make that choice, choose local. Buy, if you're, gift certificates. If you're not comfortable going out now, gift certificates are a great way to put money into the hands of the businesses that they can, can utilize now and you can redeem later. A number of our businesses have online approach. Do, do check that out. Meals, everybody's getting, well, many people are getting tired of cooking at home. Order a meal to go. Most of the businesses, well, now, all of the restaurants should be offering, well, not everybody's offering curbside pickup, but, curbside pickup. Purchase your meals to go and recognize that that is, that's a way to, to keep that business support going. But I also think what you all as council members can do is provide words of encouragement and hope for these businesses. It is, it's bleak right now, and with these new governor's orders, it is to see some of the heartbreak on some of these businesses. And we have businesses that still haven't opened since March. And so to, to see these, the continued phases, and we have fitness centers that just were able to open up that now are, are immediately closing. We have, our, our catering companies had business meetings that were coming in, and one day notice, they're shut down. They, and that's, that's a challenging part for me, is the lack of notice that we received. There were people staying in the hotels for these business meetings. There were prepackaged foods in compliance with the governor's orders that our caterers had prepared and ready to go. No notice, everything's shut down. And, and that's hard, and it is hitting these businesses hard, and I believe that you all can provide hope and encouragement and to, to focus on, on the light ahead. The positive support that you can provide is, is priceless to these businesses and so important.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran. Diane, is there a link on the Renton Chamber of Commerce or somewhere that people can go, that is, doesn't have to click 20 times, and it say, you can buy, these are the restaurants? But, you know, like, like people make it very easy for people just to know what are the restaurants that are providing food that you can pick up and, and the menus are there or things like that? Or if it's not, I think the Chamber of Commerce has a link that say, something about eating outside or, or restaurants? Am I confused with another?
Nope, nope. You're, you're, you're spot on. We had, we had a business, when COVID first struck, we had the pop-up that showed all of the businesses that were still open as, as our first homepage. The restaurants that were open was through the downtown website, and then the individual, the public was being directed to the East Side Restart, so there was a collective approach in awareness through the East Side website. But with the, the governor's orders, we're going to, we've got people working today on bringing that restaurant information as, as current as possible and putting it right there on the Chamber page, so people don't have to search, and they, they can look right there local.
Thank you, Diane. Councilmember Corman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I've, I've appreciated that, that Mayor Pavoni has been working with the Chamber, I know, to, you know, during the summer to open up more outdoor dining opportunities and, and waive various administrative rules and things like that. And I guess I would just want to say that, first of all, just for the record, I highly approve of that, as I'm sure my, my colleagues do as well. And also, I just remain very, very open to if there's other regulations that are causing troubles for our businesses now, even if, you know, ordinance changes are needed to get through this really difficult time, I, I, I just want to say, you know, for the record, I'm open-minded about those too. So please, Diane, be forthright. If, if anything the council's doing has made things harder, or if, if there's something the council could be doing that could make things easier, I'd just like to hear about it so that we can talk about it.
Sure. Thank you very much, and, and thank you for the, for everything that the city has done thus far to provide that support. The Renton Regional Fire Authority has been absolutely fantastic in having foresight and being proactive in approach and kind of staying one step ahead of things. They're absolutely wonderful. You have an employee that is, and she's generally in planning, and she's over-supporting CED, Brittany Gilia. She is, she gave a lot of hope to businesses during this time with what I would call almost a concierge service of support in helping them complete permits and, and going through the process. And she is, we had a Renton Downtown Partnership meeting recently, and one of the, the individuals there said, she is a light of hope for what could be with city process. So she, hats off and kudos to her, not just on her effectiveness, but her method of delivery too. She is an asset to the city.
Right.
And, and you know me, I will, I'll come to you with any, any challenges or, or suggestions. I, I appreciate that open door and opportunity to do so and work with the city.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. So, so I think, for me, my, I'm hearing what you're saying, and I want to cheer you up, Diane, because you're doing an incredible job, and, and I really want to make sure that, that I know how down and how, you know, how frustrating some, some of the situations that we have gone through this year can be. So as much as you are encouraging, encouraging us to, to, to support and, and cheer up our, our business community, I want to do the same with you and your team, Diane. You have been always a strong leader, you and your family of the City of Renton, and, and right now, you are there hand to hand with all our business community, and I really know how hard you and all your family, as well as all the members of the Renton Chamber of Commerce are working to make sure that our businesses keep thriving during this time. So make sure that, I know that, that, that us as council, we will do everything that is in our power to help you as well as the business community. Thank you so much for giving us a feedback about this, our staff, because that is, that is for me, one of the priorities, the customer service that we can provide as City of Renton had to be to that level all the time, you know, and, and especially with people that are struggling with money. So I'm ready for, you know, to start sharing everybody where they can buy their gifts and, and all the beautiful things that we have in Renton locally so we can support our business community, because it's part of who we are as a city. Thank you again for being today with us.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity, and again, thank you, and thank you for the support. It is, it is truly, truly appreciated.
And a really, a really quick advertisement. We will have Renton Live on Wednesday, and it's going to be fully in Spanish. And that was Diane's idea, and she invited me to be the host of the show, and I really appreciate it, you know, just how, how, you bring different ideas all the time to the table and creativity.
Wonderful.
Thank you. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.